I'll call the August 18th meeting to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Crouch?
Here.
Mr. Wataskey?
Here.
Mr. Payton?
Here.
Mr. McCrillis?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Mayor, I have two.
Okay.
You can remove the presentation by the Main Street Designation Program. The presenter has sickness in family, won't be able to make it, so you can remove that. You can also remove under New Business, letter C, Resolution Number 24 of 2020, and that was the Main Street Designation Program as well.
I would like to add one thing, and that would be garbage removal disposal companies or whatever on city-owned property, dumpster collection, whether it be Ed Meyer Complex or wherever.
And I'd like to just put on the table for discussion Resolution 22 of 2016.
I'll talk at the airport, but I'll do my comments at the end.
Anything else? Before we get into the meeting, just to let the public know, we did have a legal session prior to our meeting regarding the purchase of a building on North Franklin Street. The city has intentions of buying that building, and in our next regular meeting, we'll have a full presentation on what the plan used for that building is. And following the meeting, we will have a personnel meeting to go over two personnel issues that the city manager has to discuss with us. At this time, I'd like Greg Tress to come forward. How are you, Senator?
Good.
Good. This is a Greg Tress, 2019 Citizen of the Year proclamation. Whereas volunteering is a voluntary act of an individual freely giving of time and labor for community service, and whereas a volunteer offers something, something that is not required or an obligation, and whereas the volunteer means that the individual is working side by side with others, and whereas Greg Tress has volunteered to help multiple local organizations, including but not limited to the Lions Club, Relay for Life, UPT, and the Chamber, and whereas Greg was recently honored by the Tayside Chamber of Commerce as the 2019 Citizen of the Year, now therefore, I don't see a favor of the city of Tayside. On behalf of the city's citizens of the community and surrounding area, congratulate Greg on being named Citizen of the Year and thank him for his endless hours spent in helping others, and further encourage others to take the leap of Greg and volunteer to help others within our community for the 18th day of August in the year of our Lord, the 2020. Congratulations.
Want to get a picture?
Yeah, let's go.
Can I stand on a stool?
That's me.
I could say something.
Moving on, we have a resignation from the Tayside Housing Authority. Neil?
Yes, resignation from the Housing Authority. Carol Johnson has notified the Housing Authority for resignation. Council needs to address it.
I think the reason she resigned is she's moving out of the area.
Yeah, it looks like her house sold and they'll be moving around the first of September. And she enjoyed her time with the Tayside Housing Authority and they do a fantastic job assisting our citizens for housing if they need it.
Do you hear motion to accept the resignation?
Motion.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Wataskey?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Previous meeting minutes of 8:4 and 8:7. Take 8:4 first. Is there any corrections to those minutes, or additions? Anybody? August the 7th. Do you hear motion to approve and place on file both dates?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Your second?
A second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wataskey?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Operational reports, we have reports from the Building Inspector, the Finance Office, Fire, Police, Public Works, Water, Wastewater, and Treasurer's Office. Take these one at a time. Any questions on the Building Inspector report? Finance Department. Fire. Police. Public Works. Water. Wastewater. Treasurer. Hearing none, do I hear a motion to accept all the operational reports and place them on file?
No vote.
Your second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Wataskey?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Managers' report, Neil?
Yes, good evening, Council. Several items on the managers' report this week. First being, just want an update on 320 Bank Street. It's been a topic for the past at least a month or so. I just wanted to provide Council with an update. The garage and outbuildings of the property are going to be demolished within the next week or so, according to the new owner. The house has been removed last week. There was some concern from neighbors. I've got a couple of calls from neighbors concerned that the previous owner was living on a camper on the property. There is a pop-up camper that is on the property beside the garage. I did speak to the new owner about this individual still residing, hanging out there. He told me that he's going to be addressing that, and if he needs to get the seating involved, he will do that. So that's an update on the 320 Bank Street property. Second item I have is the Pitt Properties update. This past week, I met with Mayor Payton and Councilman McCrillis and the purchasers of the Pitt properties, Mr. Sean Ritchie and his agent from Texas. We had discussions in regards to construction of the old dorms and ball hall. We also discussed parking concerns that they had near the Pitt properties. The city solicitor has been in contact with the purchaser's attorney, and we have a closing date of September 2nd for the purchase of those properties. The next item I have is I met with Mayor Payton, Councilman McCrillis, and Leah Carter to discuss Farmer's Market. Currently, the Farmer's Market is located in the parking lot of Big G's Tire on Route 8. The discussion was about having the Farmer's Market possibly being brought back into the city. We also looked over the ordinances and discussed business transient licenses as well with the Farmer's Market. We talked about clarifying that the Farmer's Market vendors would be exempt from business transient license when at least 75% of what they sell is grown or made by them. Mayor, Councilman McCrillis, do you have anything to add as far as that discussion goes with the Farmer's Market?
No, just it's ongoing, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Hoping to get it back where it belongs.
If Council desires to go through with this, that would require an ordinance change on the percentage. But where they're looking at is where they first started, behind the old bargain store building. And we have a vacant lot there, and the owner of that building has agreed to allow the Farmer's Market to move back into town on Tuesdays and Saturdays, and also indicated if she could purchase the lot from the city, she would like to have a year-round market activity in the downtown area. So keep you abreast of what's going on there.
The next item I have on the managers' report is the Tayside Airport did receive the $20,000 COVID funding grant. Working with Deputy Mayor Crouch to get all the details on how and what this funding can be used for. We got that notification this past week, and we talked about it previously, that we were awarded that, hadn't seen anything until just this past week, that it was official. We do need to work out the details as far as how that money's used and what it can be used for, like I said. John, I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, just originally, we're going to use it for great, and we don't need to use it for that, so it's good.
Myself along with City Hall staff had a phone conference with Maur Dusel. Maur Dusel is doing the audit for the city. They came on board just this past year, and they are finished up with the financial audit for 2019. They'll be presenting to Council September 8th. I think it's September 8th, but I actually think it's supposed to be September 1st.
So it's going to be on the 1st?
It'll be the 1st, yes. The next item I have, I met with Joe Roddy, who's an engineer with Stifel McGrath this past week. We discussed the Diamond Street demo site and what's next for that site. At the previous council meeting, Council had asked me to work with an engineer to put a bid packages together for the remaining western side wall, the front archways that are still remaining, and possibly the back parking lot area. Joe is going to get back to me with costs from Stifel McGrath on putting bid packages together. I actually talked to Joe today. He'll be in Friday to give me those numbers. I did also meet with Missy Weskett, owner of Missy's Arcade, and Lori Baker from the Redevelopment Authority. We had a discussion about Missy's remaining wall and the status of that wall. Missy's going to be covering her remaining wall with charcoal gray steel from the top to just over halfway, and then transition to a red steel covering the rest of the way down. If you look, you can kind of see with Maria's, that's the kind of red that was described to me as what Missy wanted to use for her wall. I did talk to Lori Baker today, who had said that the steel had been ordered and it should be here. They have it in stock this week, and possibly could be starting that in a week or so. The front wall that remains at the demo site has been braced by the Public Works Department. The contractor from the demo has been working with an outside contractor to have the glass removed from the front wall. Joe Roddy from Stifel McGrath also needs to know from Council what we want done to the western wall that remains. Does Council want steel put on, like what Missy's wall's doing? Do they just want it left as brick and cleaned up? So Joe's looking for some insight from Council on what intentions they would like for that remaining wall. The other issue we have with that remaining wall is we were told previously that the shared wall with Gail Kreiner, her small shop on the west side, in the beginning, it was told from an engineer that it was not a shared wall. Obviously, when the contractor got in there and started taking the building down, it was come to the conclusion that it is a shared wall. So I reached out to Gail because an engineer that had previously stated that it wasn't a shared wall, kind of need to get some clarification. Whose responsibility for that wall? Is that her wall now, or is that the city's wall? So I've been working with Gail to try to get those answers, and I guess before we can really make a decision on concerning the plan, what we'd like to do, but we need to see who actually, whose wall is it? So. The next item I have is the CDVG CV update. That's a COVID funding through CDVG. I previously sent out to Council an updated breakdown of the CARES Act funding. One of the changes at the previous council meeting was the allocated funding. That was to go to the Tayside Hospital, and that was decided to be split between an emergency pod and payments to individuals who were having a struggle with utility payments. I've been working with Zach Norwood and our Fire Chief and Public Works Director to see what is the best for the city in regards to an emergency pod. It was found that neighboring cities are purchasing COVID quick-response vehicles. These vehicles are equipped with PPE supplies along with sanitizing equipment when dealing with COVID emergencies. This vehicle to the city would be much more efficient than an emergency trailer that would sit somewhere until we would need it. The other question was, if we got a trailer, how would we pull it around? We probably have to use Public Works vehicle because we won't have a vehicle to be able to move it. Zach is working with Fire Chief and Public Works Director on all the specifications and information needed for the purchase of this vehicle. DCED has given the go-ahead to Zach on this vehicle meeting the requirements for that funding. An adjustment is needed of $2,392.88 from the Small Business Assistance Program to cover the difference for this vehicle. Council previously voted on these allocations with this change, and I'm not sure, Solicitor, if we need to be vote again because it's been changed, the change of the difference of $2,392.88. The Council needs to approve that change with the allocations.
That change is since the last one?
It is a change.
Yeah, and then it need to be voted on.
So I'm looking from Council to approve that change of the difference of the $2,392.88. That would put the Small Business Program at $72,608. The assistance to individuals would be $61,000. The emergency pod, which would now be a vehicle, would be $48,392.88. And the administration fees would be $11,731.12 for a total of $193,732, which was allocated to the city for this funding.
Does that vote have to wait until next meeting?
No, that was our resolution.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so that's... The next item I have is... I was approached by Sarah Miller, who is the Executive Director for the Council on the Arts. They have been having movies in the park for the past three weeks. They're to finish up this Friday with the last movie in the park. She was asking for an extension of one more week. The weather's been cooperative for them. They've had great numbers. The first night, they had 150 in attendance. The second week, they had 125, and last week, they had, I think, right around 155. So they've had great weather, they've had a great turnout. I think the kids love it. She was asking me if it would be okay to extend it one more week. She asked me if she needed to go through a whole another event form. I told her I didn't really think that was necessary, and I would bring it up in my managers' report to see what the Council's wish was, if they would like her to fill out another event form, or they're okay with her extending it one more week.
Council have any problem extending it another week?
I think it's wonderful.
That's okay?
Yeah.
Well, I'll never know.
I'll let her know. The last item I have is just a quick update on the peer-to-peer grant that we were pursuing in regards to having a consultant come up through DCNR to provide us, kind of give us an overview of our parks, all our parks in the city. And through that process, I've got down through where I need support letters from different agencies. I just wanted to give Council an update that I've reached out to multiple agencies and sent, asking for support from them. I've heard from three of them that are full supporter of writing a support letter for the city to continue to proceed with bringing a consultant in to look at our parks and see what we have to offer. So just wanted to give you an update on that. And that concludes the managers' report.
Do you hear motion, Neil? Questions of the manager?
Now, Neil, I just want to clarify this and put this out on the table. In a conversation that I had with you, you also said that if we went the route of the vehicle as opposed to the trailer, this would also provide our emergency services with an additional vehicle. So if they had an emergency call, they don't have to bring out the fire engine anymore. They can respond in this vehicle compared to putting a water and tire on their engines, correct?
That's correct. Right now, what they do is when there's an emergency call, medical call, they're driving a full-size fire truck to the scene with two firemen. On a normal shift, there's two firemen. When there's a COVID call for a COVID patient, one of the firemen could go to assist the ambulance, while the other stays back with the fire truck if it's needed, if a fire would happen to happen when they're out on this emergency call. Right now, what happens is when they take the fire truck out on a COVID call and they come back, both of them have to sanitize the truck. They have to call firemen in to cover, because if there's an emergency, while they're sanitizing the truck and themselves, this would alleviate, one, taking a full-size fire truck to an emergency call, two, calling in overtime. The firemen have to come into cover while they're sanitizing not only the equipment but themselves. It would just be a great benefit, not only for emergency calls, but for the city.
Didn't the chief also mention that this vehicle could also be used in support of, you know, Hightown or Pleasantville?
That's correct.
Something, it doesn't necessarily have to be just COVID.
That's correct. Doesn't have to necessarily stay right here in the city either and assist.
Bill, any questions?
Nope.
Good.
John?
Good.
I just have a question on the Diamond Street.
Sure.
Do you have any idea, any timeframe? Has redevelopment given you any idea where the topsoil is going to be put in?
The topsoil can be put in. They were, Missy's wall, what was told to me today is, Missy's wall, all the steel is in. They can start it within a week, and then they can bring the topsoil after. If Council would like to, I suppose, to lay that so with the equipment coming in and out to be tore up, it could probably put off a little bit longer. And that's going through Wargo Enterprises, who did the...
That'd still be up to TRA, right?
Yeah, we would have to coordinate with them.
And any idea of timeframe that the contractor has with the individual to have the glass taken down?
I actually talked to the individual that is taking down the glass. He brought out a liability form so the city's not liable, along with Wargo Enterprises. I spoke to him yesterday, and he had said it should only take him a week to get the glass done. And he started, he was going to possibly move a truck in there today. Okay.
Do you hear motion to accept the managers' report and place it on file?
I'll make a motion.
Your second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Wataskey?
Yes.
Council committee updates. Anything on the airport?
Just going to say that we're meeting with the pre-construction meeting tomorrow, and we should re-proceeding repair and rebuilding and resurfacing the runway. And we're able to do it at no cost to the city.
Moving on, at this point in our agenda, we allow public participation pertaining to any item under Old Business, and we limit the time to five minutes per individual speaker. Under Old Business tonight, we have a second reading of Council Bill Number 4, Alcohol on City Property. Anybody wishing to come forth and discuss that with us? Come to the podium. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Jim Smith, 407 West Elm Street, Tayside, PA. And I think there's several people here that are concerned about this, that, you know, the parks are nice and we have a lot of entertainment and stuff like that, but do we really need to have rate the alcohol near the parks? I mean, we have a lot of kids running around there and so forth, and I, for one, hate to see it. I know the society is becoming a lot more, you know, leaning towards this type of behavior and so forth. Still, a lot of us here are old school. I hate to see it. I don't see there's any need for it, and I, for one, would like to not, like to see a vote no on this. I realize that one person wants to do it because maybe it would help his income and so forth. Well, you know, that's too bad. What happens is the next one, we have a stripper joint come in, and we're going to have girls running around using poles up the park because it helped his economy. And where do we draw the line? Because that's what we're talking about, you know?
This is just alcohol though.
Right?
This is just alcohol though.
Right.
We're not there yet.
I'm just using that as an example, you know, of what can happen. It just means, you know, as soon as you open the door, then this person wants there, especially when it's resolved. Next person wants there, and you got to draw the line. With all issues without it, I don't see the need for it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm Reverend Albert Smith. I'm a mission director from Baptist Church, and I'm here to speak for the Baptist Church. And we don't see any need because the children are being a part, and children go over what they see. And we would say in our community, children would not see alcohol used in occupied places. We're more concerned about the children than anything else. We need to really concentrate on children. Because every day I pick up the paper, there's a DUI. There was five in, starting this Monday. Every day, there's DUIs in the paper. And I think that we, as people of Tayside, need to be concerned with our youth. I would say one thing, once I was in federal probation, Tayside is known for its drug. So I would like to see our town come back and be unified, more about families. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Leah Carter, 1855 Campbell Road. I would like to speak in support of this ordinance change. We, an organization that I volunteer with, we had approached the city back in 2009 about it after extensive consultation with attorneys at the LCB and with entities in Erie that run the block parties that have been running up in Erie for decades. They are fabulous fundraisers for their community. They raise money to put back into the community, whether it's downtown development or nonprofit entities in the Erie area. And I would love to see us be able to do the same type of fundraising to put money back into our community also. I'm also a firm believer that children learn by example, and I think if you teach them moderate and responsible use of alcohol, it will go a long way. I know I had my own children with me at We Love Erie days, and they are not starved for life. They, I think, have grown into responsible adults, and they use alcohol responsibly. And I think that's what we need to be showing our children and teaching them. And I think the best way to do that is by exposing them to the reality of you can have a good time with or without alcohol, and you can do it responsibly. So I really encourage you to vote for this ordinance. I think it's a great step forward for our community, and all our neighboring communities have shown that it can be done responsibly and benefit the community overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I do have a letter here that, is there somebody else?
Yeah, there's...
I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
No lady standing up.
I didn't see it. Sorry.
Hi, I'm Marie Black, Main 888 West Elm Street. And I'm just really concerned about it. You know, I believe that people have a freedom of speech, a freedom of brains, but I think there's a time, there's a time and place for everything. I mean, we have bars, we have other places, and I don't think alcohol needs to be in our parks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anybody standing up behind her? I do have a letter here that an individual dropped off at City Hall addressed to me, and she asked that I read this. Uh, and, uh, she asked that I read this. So, um, this is regarding selling of alcohol beverages in Titusville public parks and/or recreation areas. I would, I would like whether the decision has already been made or not, from my opinion, to be heard by all of you. Remember what you are doing to the city of Titusville that you are making choices for. Please do not turn over parks into anything, anything isms. It is my belief that public places, a business have a form to obtain their, uh, their place, a business to be granted the ability to sell alcohol beverages. If I am wrong, please accept my apology. All businesses, uh, covers, corners have their own place to sell and make their rules have. This would be an outside open event for all to enjoy. And if alcohol beverages needed to be sold to promote the event, then possibly it should be held at some other facility to accommodate that situation. Food doesn't come, food doesn't come with an age group to sell to. Alcohol beverages do. Alcohol beverages is not soda. Alcohol beverages comes with a price of the possibility of police protection to oversee the event. There are many places of business in Titusville that sell alcohol beverages. Please enjoy your beverage at your favorite place of business. Thank you for letting me voice my thoughts on the, on this item. Interested citizen. It was signed by Margaret Finstamaker of 142 Foster Road, Titusville. To, to, uh, bring some discussion to this, uh, City Council met, uh, I believe, two weeks ago to introduce the ordinance. Uh, since that time, the ordinance has been revised that alcohol beverages would not be sold in all parks. They would be in the commercial district and/or, uh, Edmire complex when there are adult tournaments, et cetera. There, it is not planned for Roberts Grove or Burgess Park or Longway Field or Sunset Heights. We're looking at Shidey Park and the Edmire complex. So, I just want to clarify that it is not all parks. This is not going into neighborhoods. One good example of using Shidey Park would be the Chambers Wine Walk. If anybody ever goes to Northeast for their wine festival, it is in their downtown park. Along with that, there are crafts in the park, uh, there are dogs in the park, uh, and people, you know, go about their business. There's food vendors. If you want to go to a different atmosphere for your wine, uh, they have a separate location called The Gravel Pit. And you can go to The Gravel Pit. That's where they have their music, et cetera. So, uh, Northeast makes it work. You know, our beer fest shuts down the streets in the city. So, those, those are a couple of things that were taken under consideration. I open it up to members of council, uh, for any comments, concerns.
Mayor, I just want to clarify, you said Shidey Park and Edmire complex, plumbing parks.
Oh, plumbing, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Commercial. Uh, comments? Sarah?
The only other comment is that these are also events that have to have special permits.
Correct.
So it's not just an opening of the parks for, for alcohol consumption. The, you know, the ordinance of regular everyday prohibition is there. Um, these are special events that have to come through council and be clarified to what the purpose is and, and what, um, what the event will be.
For, for me personally, I, I can understand every aspect of every concern that was brought forward here tonight. However, I, I come, I accepted this seat up here to help drive our community, drive this city into the future. And I've discussed with council members over and over again that if, if Titusville is ever to grow, if we're ever to move forward, one thing that must happen is we must become a more friendly community, um, and friendly in all aspects. And currently, when I sit back and I look at things, if our own residents want to do something, a lot of times they have to go outside of our community. If they want to go to a wine festival, if they want to go to a beer festival, whatever it may be, they have to go outside of our community. And really, we want to keep people here and attract people here. And if this is one outlet that we can do that on a, as Sarah said, on a restricted basis, then I'm all in favor of it. I think it's, uh, moving towards being that friendly community and not so rigid in looking at how things have always been done.
John?
Uh, I have just a couple of comments out with Jay. I appreciate people's concerns and I hear the concerns. I also have lived lots of different places and seen different festivals, et cetera. And they are good for the city. It's not, as someone put on Facebook one day, someone thought they could start bringing their beer cooler to the Monday night, uh, concerts. No, that's not what it's for. It has to be a special event approved by council, as was said already. And, uh, I certainly hope that while there are concerns that somebody doesn't think that this is gonna, you know, turn it into that next step of polls and all that stuff. But, uh, I think it's, it's roped off, it's monitored, it's announced. People know it's gonna happen. It's a great event for the city. That's all I have to say really.
Bill?
When I first heard about it, I was, I was upset. I've never, I've lived here all my life. I've never seen alcohol in the parks. But on the other hand, this is going to be, in my opinion, directed by the city. As far as who does it, are they allowed to do it, come to us and get their permission to do it, right? Far as Shidey Park goes, sure, Monday nights are great. You fill up that park Monday nights, once a, once a week. After that, what? That park is never being used. There's nobody downtown to enjoy this park. You put something in the park, they're gonna enjoy it. Parents have a right to do what they, whatever they want to do, to watch your children. That's, but you got, this, the city has to change. And, uh, I'm just as, I go to church and I'm really just as everybody else. But in my opinion, as long as this is monitored and taken care of by the city and the councils, I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Okay?
I'm done.
Okay. When this, when this first came up, one of my biggest concerns, and, and council can correct me if I'm misstating myself. But, uh, when we were approached to have the event in Shidey Park, uh, that has brought this about, my biggest concern was children. How do we, as soon as we announce that there's gonna be a concert in the park that we're gonna have, like we have on Monday nights, mom and dad and the kids running around in the park having a good time and, uh, being exposed to the, uh, the beer wagon that might be sitting there. Uh, and my concern was how do we control that? Once I heard the presentation of the individual who wants to do this, I felt better that there was going to be control, how, how the park would be roped off, et cetera, and how people have to get into it, uh, ages of people that could go into it. And individuals who, who want to do this, they have their own license that they carry, uh, that has nothing to do with the city. And if for some reason something happened, it, that they don't control or they don't, uh, set up safety guidelines for, they jeopardize their, their license. And, uh, I think with that jeopardy in mind, whoever wants to do this, uh, I would hope that would take the necessary precautions that they need to, to make it safe. And, you know, in, in a legal way also, so. We have a, we have an ordinance on the table, uh, Council Bill Number Four. Uh, it's, uh, on the table for second reading, uh, which would be the adoption of that ordinance. Do I hear a motion to adopt the, the Council Bill Number Four? Reject Council Bill Number Four on second reading or table Council Bill Number Four on second read?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call a roll, please.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
I want the public to understand what has been done tonight is allowing for a special event to be in commercial district parks only. Uh, it will not affect residential parks. Uh, it could be at Edmire complex. But as, uh, Sarah has mentioned and Bill mentioned, um, it is not open season on these parks. It is open based on a special application coming to City Council for approval. Which, on its face, any event could be, uh, approved or not approved. If, if someone would come with no plan and they just say, hey, we want to have a, we want to have a beer bash in, in Shidey Park tonight and we're gonna sell beer. Well, I would assume that this council's not gonna approve that. Somebody's gonna have to come forward with all their, you know, i's dotted and their t's crossed and to guarantee that, uh, that event's gonna go off as safe as possible. So, um, I know some of you may be upset. And we can understand that, but, you know, let's see how it works. We can always come back to the table. Moving on, new business, uh, with public participation, five-minute time limit per individual speaker. The items under new business tonight are special event Tales of the Trails, Titusville Renaissance, special event Saturday night concert in the park, international property maintenance code, pet-friendly parks, water service for part-time residents, um, garbage removal, will that cover? And, uh, Resolution Twenty-Two. Resolution Twenty-Two is a resolution, uh, by City Council of two thousand, two thousand and sixteen, uh, naming enhanced Titusville as the only entity that could apply or administer, uh, administer grants on behalf of the city, so.
There's also the COVID funding change.
Thank you.
Thank you. Special event, uh, anybody want to speak on any of those items?
Now, this is, uh, this is from any item on that list, right?
Anything, anything under new business.
Okay, good. All right, I'd like to address item E, pet-friendly parks.
Okay.
Of course, right now, there's signs up, no, no dogs allowed in the parks. And, uh, my concern is that if you, well, right now, we have a problem. I mean, right now, people are pretty much disregarding the signs. Up there, at least they are, up there in Roberts Grove. We live right here on the corner, so we get sitting up boards and we watching day in and day out, you know, all times of day. And probably I would say maybe half the people are really great. They have a dog over there and their dog does their business. And they get down there and they have the bag with them and they pick it up and they go on. And we're sitting there, they can't really see us. So, there's, they look, there's nobody around that they can see. They're still there doing what they're supposed to. But there's about half that could care less. They just take the dog and just keep right on the line. And Roberts Grove is a, is really a park set up for smaller kids. That's really what it's set up for, as a little. And a lot of ladies bring their, bring their little kids over and the kids are walking around the grass and along and so forth. Uh, my biggest concern is, I mean, if you wanted to have it in the other parks that really don't have the play apparatuses for little kids, that'd be one thing. Most kids don't get down to go around the grass. But up there, they do. So my concern is, I think up there, not only should it not be allowed, but it ought to be enforced if they don't take the dog to there. If everybody did, they do diligence, it wouldn't be a problem.
Right.
But, you know, you have too many of those that don't, you know? And, uh, that's my biggest concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Special event Tales of the Trails, Titusville Renaissance. I believe Leah is here tonight to speak on this. Did I say that too much?
No.
Okay. Um, I, I think you're probably, um, all, um, aware and hopefully in total agreement that our land and water trails in this region are one of our greatest assets. And, um, they not only enhance the quality of life for our residents, but they, um, are a tourism draw and they help to promote our community. And they're an economic, economic development driver, um, to help, um, us to bring businesses in, um, into our area. With those things in mind, uh, in two thousand and eight, uh, Titusville Renaissance, in accordance with and because these things are all part of our mission, um, we, uh, formed, um, the Titusville Area Trails Association as a committee under Titusville Renaissance. Um, and, uh, this committee, uh, was actually one of the founding members of the Erie Pittsburgh Trail Alliance and has been very active in advocating for and supporting and promoting trail use and development. Um, that, that is our role. Um, in, in the scheme of, uh, trail development, we, we advocate on behalf of the trail users and the trail enthusiasts. Um, and to that end, um, last year, we began, um, an event, um, at the Jersey Bridge Trailhead on National Trail Day, which is the first Saturday in June every year. And we titled it Find Your Adventure. And we brought in with, we partnered with many entities. And we brought in all different kinds of outdoor activities, um, for people to learn about, experience, try. Um, and it was a wonderful event that we, uh, expected and hoped to grow this June. However, due to the pandemic, we were not able to hold that event. Um, so we, we did something different. Actually, we did an online, um, photography contest, which is another topic altogether. But anyway, um, because we could not do our, our hands-on event in June, um, we started to look at, uh, September, which is PA Trails Month. And it's again, an opportunity to showcase trails. And, um, we, we had some, um, thoughts in mind about what we'd like to do. And then an opportunity arose. The PA Environmental Council, um, was given many grants from DCNR to administer. And these were small grants that would be used for small events or activities. And we put together with some partners, um, an event that we, um, would like to have. And it, it involves several different pieces. Um, and we call it Tales of the Trails. And it begins at the Jersey Bridge Trailhead with, uh, a history walk down Queen City Trail from Jersey Bridge Trailhead to the Martin Street or Black Ridge Trailhead, um, at Southwoods Assistant Living. And, um, we, we wanted to do this walk not only to introduce people to the trail that may not be familiar, but we wanted to introduce them to some six new interpretive panels that highlight, um, places or, um, events that happened in our history along that stretch of Oil Creek. And, um, there were six new interpretive panels that have been placed there. Uh, the Oil Regional Alliance, um, had them, uh, researched and manufactured. The city of Titusville has hazards and the process of installing them. And we would like to really showcase these and introduce the, the community to these great pieces of history that also will now augment our trail. At the, at Southwoods, at the Martin Street, uh, Trailhead, um, the last panel, um, we would like to do a ribbon cutting that would include the, well, let me back up one moment. I forgot an important part. The history walk will be facilitated by historians from Benson Library. And they will facilitate the history walk. It will be limited to a total of twenty-five people. Um, people will have to register ahead of time. This is following the COVID, um, uh, guidelines. And then the, the history walk will end at the Martin Street Trailhead, um, where at the last panel, we would have held a ribbon cutting, um, including the, the Oil Regional Alliance actually will facilitate that, including the city, um, and, um, celebrating these new additions to our trail. trail. And then another partner that we work with, the Council on Greenways and Trails, there's a trail organization in our region, primarily the Oil Heritage Region and a little bit into Clary and Claren County. And also our T- Crighton Titusville Committee is assisting with letting us borrow some equipment for a little ceremony, because every year, the Council on Greenways and Trails has annual greenways awards for their volunteer, the partner and the neighbor of the year that helps in the developing and maintaining of our regional trails. And so they also, they were going to do their awards at our event in June, which of course we couldn't have. So now we would like to invite them to give their awards at the conclusion of our history walk and ribbon cutting. So this is, like I said, a three-pronged kind of event, partners, several partners involved. And for the mini-grant, we had to apply for our permit with you to have the event because the city owns the trails. Since that application went in, we have been notified just recently that we have been awarded the funds if we're permitted to have this event. So I am here to answer any questions and hopefully you will approve our event.
Questions?
You probably don't want it.
I think you guys.
Okay.
No questions?
No.
And the date again, Leah?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's September, Saturday, September 12th. It'll begin at 10:00 AM at the Jersey Bridge Trailhead. People will have to pre-register for the history walk. And then at 11:00 AM, we will begin the ribbon cutting and the greenways awards at the Martin Street or Black Bridge, I'm not sure what the official name of that trailhead is yet. But, and the general public can come to that, even if they didn't do the history walk, the general public can come to see the awards and the ribbon cutting.
I actually do have a question, if you don't mind. Is there a cost to participate or do you just want to register and so it keeps your number?
It's all free, but yeah, we just need to keep our numbers down for the history walk.
Leah, I have a question, how do you register?
We'll publicize that you'll call the library and the library will take the registrations, because they're leading the history walk.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve or not approve the event?
I'll motion to approve the event.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Call roll.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Special event Saturday night concert in the park. Somebody here to speak on that?
Yeah, that's back in the corner.
Don't really have a lot to say, but Adam Hor, 2009 South Franklin, just want to thank you all for doing what you did and doing it so quickly. I think we can definitely do it safely and we will keep an eye on everything and we won't let you down or disappoint you, so.
Well, you're the lead. You know, you're the first one out of the chute here. So it's got to be done right. So, you know, we don't have to come back to the table. I made a brief comment about you having a license. Can you just expand on that a little bit about your responsibilities with that license?
Yeah, through the LCB, we have to get a license for any event like this, it's a special expo permit. We have to give them the physical address, we have to make sure it's broken off. Just they require for every event that we do, and we get it every event, so it's just a legality that we have to have and then we also get insurance.
And if you don't follow those guidelines, you could jeopardize losing your license card. Any questions about?
Have you done other events?
Yes, lots of events.
Just so I understand correctly from two weeks ago, the whole park will be roped off, so the participants of the event are contained inside the park. But they don't have to be necessarily customers of yours, correct?
Correct, it's free to the public, if you want to purchase a beer, fine, if you want to come sit down, bring your chairs and listen to music, that's fine too.
So are you going to have kind of like a secondary, separate area inside, like where people come up to purchase the drinks, show their ID, do all that type of stuff?
That'll be off to the side, but it's not going to be roped off any different. We need one perimeter in general. And that's what the LCB requires and I don't see a point of separating people, I mean, I don't think it's needed.
And you also said the last time that there'll be wristbands for those underage, so that, is that, so there'll be different color wristbands for those that are eligible and those that are not?
Do you have any questions?
No, I just, I'd like to thank you, Adam, for stepping up to the plate and trying something new in this town. And like our mayor said, you are the first. And we're, we're all up here hoping everything goes good and we can continue on with this.
Correct, absolutely.
I have one more question, Adam. You're just going to be selling your beer, correct? There's no other alcohol being sold?
You had mentioned a possibility of a food truck, where there'd be food and everything?
Yeah, we had two food vendors lined up a couple of weeks ago. I'm sure we'll have at least probably two this time.
I have a question, are you looking just to do on August 29th, or are you looking to continue to follow this the next few Saturdays or every other Saturday?
It was every two Saturdays.
Every two Saturdays?
Right.
Time, time-wise?
We'd probably start at two and the music would be done at nine. And I know we have to be out of the park by 10, so after nine o'clock, I think we'll start winding down, we have plenty of other, earlier than 10 to clean up.
And you had said that if there's rain, that you'll possibly move it to the next week?
Possibly.
So if that happens, let's say at the first line, you'd have two concerts in a row then?
That's kind of what we.
So it won't push the whole schedule back, just that one?
Okay.
What's council's opinion on approving his event on a one-to-one basis? We get the first one under our belt, we take a look, see how it worked before we give, just an open blanket, you can have three or four of them. If the first one goes totally bad, then we're not locked in. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but that gives council an opportunity to, you know, see what, see what happens. And we're not going to be a stickler.
I'm okay with that, but I would say since this is the second time now he's done a special event permit for this, that we, if we approve for the first one, to see that we then don't.
Oh, no, he wouldn't have to reapply.
Just extend to the other that are on this permit.
Yeah, he wouldn't have to reapply.
Or could you say that the rest of it could go if it goes okay or something?
You okay with that?
Yep.
So, do I hear a motion to approve Adam's request for the first Saturday? And based on how that goes, future events will be approved also. Does that, Brian, does that cover?
How do you determine whether, I guess?
Well, if there's an all-out riot, you know, or.
So is it approved subject to council's ability to revoke approval for the future events?
Yeah.
So council would have to be able to say it's off.
So the pressure's really on. I like the idea of the events, just, yeah. I don't see anything happening. So do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
So can I ask one? So the motion is for the concert on the 29th and then at the next meeting, we would approve the additionals?
Or, or no, we wouldn't have to approve them again, we would revoke if we had that. So basically they're all approved unless we revoke.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Not only council's depending on you, but those folks in the audience tonight are depending on you too, so, okay?
Over to you.
All right, thank you. International Property Maintenance Code, you, Brian, if you want to.
Yeah, just a few minutes here.
Want to read that by title?
Sure. Just real quick, to start, where our current maintenance code is from the 1960s, the city of Titusville. So just so everyone's aware, this is a much newer version of the Property Maintenance Code. So this is an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Pennsylvania, adopting portions of the 2015 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, regulating and governing the conditions and maintenance of all property, buildings and structures, providing the standards for supply utilities and facilities and other physical things and conditions essentially to ensure the structures are safe, sanitary and fit for occupation and use. And condemnation of buildings and structures unfit for human occupancy and use and the demolition of such existing structures in the city, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees therefore, amending Part 19 of the codified ordinances of the city of Titusville and repealing Articles 1111 and 1711 of the codified ordinances of the city of Titusville and other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herein.
Brian, you want to add anything to that?
I think it's going to be helpful to have an up-to-date Property Maintenance Code when trying to enforce that. It has additional provisions and procedures that aren't clear in the current ordinance and it also resolves that when I was going through drafting this, there were a couple conflicts between some different code sections that we're able to resolve through this new ordinance. The, obviously copies of this will be available at City Hall, there will also be copies of the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code there for people that they want to review, although they can't really take those out of the building or copy them. It is available online for free if people want to look at it.
Any questions by council? Sarah?
Yeah.
Jay? Bill?
No, it's just encourages people to upgrade. Anywhere they can, when they can, when they can afford it.
Tom?
I have nothing to add.
Do I hear a motion to introduce, I believe it would be council number five?
Yes.
Council number five, first reading?
I'll motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Pet-friendly parks. Anybody else would like to speak on pet-friendly parks? To start the discussion, council briefly had talked about, you know, allowing pets in the park and right now our city ordinance does not allow that.
Danny, sorry, mayor, the ordinance actually wouldn't allow it, it's only prohibited in areas that are assigned, no pets.
Right, very.
So, yeah.
I think most of them are signed though.
Yes.
I think most of our parks are assigned. But, that's a good point. But the ordinance does require, well, you brought Jim, you know, picking up waste. It also requires that the dog be under control at all times. I picked up a Pennsylvania state dog laws and one of those items under there was that the dog had to be under control at all times. I don't, I'm coming from this where I don't see a reason why you as an individual or me as an individual can't walk our dog through Chide Park if it's under control. And I'm a responsible adult and I clean up. Unfortunately, you know, no government at any level can dictate people's personal responsibility. You know, I, we see people walk by our houses, we're on the south side and we see people picking it up and we see people that don't. But my thought is that, you know, a service dog is no different than a regular dog, other than he has a lot more to do for his individual, you know, I understand that. But we all are stakeholders in our parks. The, you know, a dog owner is a stakeholder in a park. And I just believe that to walk your dog through the park, you should be allowed to do that. Dara?
Just a couple of things, I think if we're going to move to approve and allow dogs in the parks, that it becomes a city's responsibility to provide pet bags and, you know, a little station for that. It also becomes a responsibility to make sure that garbages are emptied more frequently if people are then putting the bag waste in, because you don't want that to fester, especially in the summer. But also, just like other responsibilities of the city, like graffiti and those kinds of things, I think we need to make a more concerted effort to look at the park more often and unfortunately, you know, pick up after people who aren't doing it themselves. That becomes a bigger city responsibility if we decide to allow the dogs in the parks.
Who else?
Jay?
I'm a, I'm a dog owner. I will say I've been guilty at times for not picking up simply because my dog wanted to go for a walk and I went out the door without a bag. But I try whenever I can to clean up after my dog. I, I look at this as one of those, again, being a more friendly community. I look at, I look at people from all over the place and we might have, you know, an 85-year-old resident who lives half a block away from a park and that's the only place that he or she can take their dog and, you know, go out and enjoy something. I'd hate to take that opportunity away from them because of a couple people who don't pick up. At the same time, I also agree with what Sarah said and it, we have to figure out a way to make a more concerted effort to make sure our parks are cleaned up and intended to. And I was speaking to another city resident about this the other day and he suggested, you know, making fines potentially more stringent on people who don't follow the guidelines that are set forth, you know, for a long time it's just been a, hey, your dog has to be on a leash, or hey, you should pick up after your dog. Maybe if the city was a little bit more apt to come down on you for that, maybe it would only take a couple people being made an example of to see that shift right a little bit, so.
Bill?
I guess I get a couple of different things about this. We have a complex down there, that city admires, that has a lot of room. And we've been approached by certain people in town, Danny, you were sitting on that meeting with me, about putting a dog park down there, friendly dog park, fencing it in and letting your dog, bring your dog down, let him run. And I think that's one thing we can consider. But I had a real problem with dogs in the park, I really do. If people would do their responsibility and do the right thing, I say, okay. Maybe we need to put more stations out as far as bags go instead of maybe. Maybe we need to put more stations out as far as bags go, instead of maybe two in a park, put four, six in a park. Where the kids play? That's another question with me, especially with the, now, the Ed Meyer's complex. I don't think, if I had a child playing soccer or baseball, I wouldn't want them to go out there on the baseball field and step in something that doesn't belong there, or soccer, fall down, roll around in it. Well, I don't know, it's a tough situation. It really is. I don't know how you control it. How do you find people? You know what I mean? We put this back on the police department to find people? Go around and have your neighbor turn your butt in? I don't know. I don't know, it's, it needs more discussion, I really do, Lee.
I think it comes down to residents, you know, policing things, policing things themselves. And then, thinking about, thinking about each of our park areas, I could, I could be wrong, but when I think about each park, each park kind of has an open area to it. I know Roberts Grove does, down on the Oak Street side, there's the little paved basketball court, and then closer to Monroe Street, there's an open grassy area there with no playground equipment. Burgess Park has some areas like that. Longway has a majority of their area like that. Sunset Heights, I mean, it's...
The whole thing.
Yeah. Could, could we make the parks pet-friendly within the designated areas? So, a sign can be put up like, this is a designated pet area.
They do that at rest areas. They do that at rest areas. I mean, listening to Jim's concern about Roberts Grove, I guess I was reminded when I first got here, almost going on three years now, that somebody complained about somebody not picking up their dog's stuff. So, previous council decided just to put up signs that said, no pets allowed. So, I, I think, but, and it didn't prevent all of them, right? They keep coming. So, I think if you combine everything that we're talking about here, if you put in actual dispensers that have the bags and they have a little place where you put them, you could even list on there, people who don't pick it up, get such and such a fine. With freedom comes responsibility, but I think the problem in a city, when you just put up signs that say, no pets, is you still have a certain amount of people that just completely disregard it. So...
Usually we force it.
We're looking for a volunteer.
Well, we know that they're a world now.
I know.
The old days, like when I was a kid, if an adult said something to me, I would say, that's, you were taught to respect your elders. Now, they say, screw you, buddy. Right. That's where we're at.
But, I agree with Jay that, you know, a sign that doesn't say, no dog in the park, but rather, you know, no dogs on a playground equipment, is, is much more friendly, that you can still bring your dog, but not where the kids are going to be rolling around or playing on that.
See, my opinion is, on the parks, we're looking at building a dog park with CDVG funding where dogs can go out and run freely and do their thing, but you still have to clean up. But, my, my thing on park-friendly would be that that dog remains on a leash.
Oh, absolutely. I think that's a state law.
That we don't, we don't unhook him in Roberts Grove and just let him go wherever he wants.
So, the state law is that they have to be under control, not necessarily leashed. The regulations for city parks actually require them to be on a controlled, a physical device.
Right.
Like a leash.
And Jim, you'll like this, that the ordinance does require animal waste, it does require individuals to pick up, but, you know, ordinances are only as good as the enforcement of them. What's council pleasure? You want to table this for the night, where we can have further discussion, give it some more thought, and bring, and put it on the agenda for next week?
Yeah.
For the next meeting?
I would agree with that, and have some, you know, alternatives, some, some ideas on that.
And the city manager, you, and maybe the new code enforcement, the chief can talk and maybe bring some recommendations to us?
Sure.
So, do I have, do I hear a motion to table pet-friendly parks and instruct the city manager to meet with code enforcement to bring back some ideas?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Some, yeah, second.
Further discussion? Call or roll, please.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. McRillis?
Yes.
The next item is water service for part-time residents. I believe I sent to council members the request that I received. I just put this on, that possibly we can instruct the city manager to come back with some type of a policy for snowbirds. Right now, if you go to Florida for six months, the ideal thing is to have your water turned off, and then turn back on when you come back, then you're not charged, you know, sewer and refuse billing for those months. However, the individual that sent me the letter, they have hot water heat, and they have to leave their water on. So, maybe some ideas, Neil, on how to deal with those. I think it's strictly going to be on a case-by-case basis, so... Everybody agree? Have Neil bring something back?
Carter, making it a people-friendly thing.
Jay?
Okay.
I couldn't follow, but it was garbage dumpsters.
I'll just, I'll just give the quick backstory. On Friday night at, what, Neil, roughly nine o'clock, I received a phone call from the organizer of the girls' softball tournament that we had at the Ed Meyer complex this past weekend, and nine o'clock at night, and he said, Jay, all of the dumpsters at the Ed Meyer complex are filled. And earlier in the day, I don't know if they contacted the city or what had happened, but Chris, our public works director, he did have a dumpster moved from Burgess Park down to the Ed Meyer complex. And between them moving it down there and it, me getting a phone call, the dumpster had been halfway filled already, and somebody had placed a dead animal inside the dumpster. Now, I, we've, a couple months ago, we went over this with people dumping stuff in the dumpster, and I don't think we need to rehash that up, but when I got that phone call, the next thing I did was send Neil a message, and, you know, I need to say thank you to Neil and to Chris. At nine o'clock on a Friday night, they both responded to me, came up with a solution within a matter of minutes, and the problem was solved. But, in talking with Neil, he made it known to me that our current waste management company, under contractual obligation, they were supposed to be there on Friday emptying the dumpsters. And I know that this has come up on a couple different ti, a couple different occasions where they're not holding up their obligations. People go to our parks and they can't park within 100 yards of the dumpster because of the smell. So, I think we've now kind of reached a point where it's time for Neil, whoever it may be, to look at an alternative company that can service our city a little bit better than what we're currently seeing. I can tell you, they were supposed to be there Friday. I was at the Ed Meyer complex all day Saturday. The dumpsters remained full. There was never a truck that came in the next day. They never came in on Sunday. So, I think, I think it's time to explore an alternative option.
Yeah, I agree. We've had some issues with the electronic pickup that we had recently. You know, there's over 2,000 customers that pay, you know, garbage sewer refuse, and they limited to 187 customers to drop off your TV, you know, electronic device. Is that really fair to everybody that pays all year round, that you only have one day for, to take your electronics down? There's been some issues in the past that I was brought to my attention, that it's always been a struggle dealing with our current vendor getting a dumpster, a certain-sized dumpster. My understanding is one year they had to pile stuff up in City Hall parking lot because the dumpster wasn't big enough. There was a struggle this year working something out that we had to pick up on a Saturday, and we were still going back and forth with them on a Friday, getting them to agree to work with us a little bit and follow the contract. So, our contract will be up, I believe, Heather Kirk may form wrong, beginning of next year?
Like mid, mid next year.
Mid next year. So, I think that's an avenue we should explore.
That has to go out to bid next year?
That's right.
Or they have the contract for all of next year?
It goes through like mid, mid-year.
But, I've got a question for the solicitor then. If, if we could show that they have indeed been in breach of their contract in terms of scheduled removal and all that type of stuff, is, can we legally move forward with that earlier than the termination of that contract?
I'd need to see the contract.
Okay.
Sign.
Why don't we have the city manager, Brian, review the contract and see what our options are?
Our residents just deserve better than what they're getting right now, so...
Anything else? Anybody want to chime in on garbage?
Just one more. You recall, we had a discussion about cardboard not being picked up and put in. That was another issue we had to deal with, so anyhow.
Resolution 22. I sent a note out to members of council about Resolution 22 of 2016, and Brian responded quickly that we better look at it before we do anything, and I thank you for doing that, Brian. And based on that, I reached out to an individual that I know, and another individual gave information that DCNR does not require a municipality to name one entity as their grant writer or administrator. The Historic Society does not. And this person was not aware of any agency that would require that the city name one entity, and it's the only person that could do work for us. So, I believe this was done in haste four years ago on a different reasoning, and I still stand by my opinion that it should be, that we should get rid of Resolution 22. And the only thing I would, my final question would be, why would we by resolution prohibit ourselves from working with the county, other economic development groups, Northwest Planning, and other organizations to write grants or, you know, solicit funding for us? Now, once a grant is received, whoever provides the grant requires that it be one entity that runs the grant, but to name one group to do everything for us when we have since taken some of that grant away from them, I don't know why, so that's what I stand. I know we can't act on it tonight, so... Anybody has any questions on me or...
When can we act on?
We could, by resolution, we can, can we do it tonight, or should we wait next week? Next time? There's no hurry.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at Resolution 22 of 2016, just to see what it says, to make sure that, yeah, we're not...
Yeah, I started looking at it based on what our presentation was going to be this evening on the Main Street program, and...
Just made things more restrictive than what I see. I think we just, we're not looking at any of your answers right now anyhow, so...
No.
How about next meeting?
Yeah, that's fine.
Next table, next meeting.
Yep. Okay. Do I hear a motion to table this and have Neil put it on our agenda for next meeting?
Motion sent, ma'am.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Call or roll, please.
Mr. McRillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes. Well, the next item is the COVID funding. Neil, you want to run over that real quick again, what the funding changes were?
Yeah, I sure can. So, allocated for small business program is $72,608. Subsistence payments, $61,000. Emergency pod slash vehicle, $48,392.88. Administration, $11,731.12, for a total of $193,732. That difference for council is changing from $46,000 to the emergency pod to $48,392.88, for a difference of $2,392.88.
Brian, before I came on board, we were advised that anything that was done with COVID did not have to be in a public meeting, and we could make a decision on moving whatever we had to with COVID on without, we had to keep it in, etc.
So, this is, this is different because this is CDVG money.
This is COVID-CDVG, okay. All right.
Right. CDVG, it's got to be public.
And we were also told from the county that this money basically can move back and forth at any given time. Do we have to have Neil keep coming back to us and passing, you know, or can we give him the authority to adjust those numbers as recommended by the county administrator?
I believe council needs to adjust those numbers because the numbers are set.
Okay.
CDVG requirements, we want to make sure we keep those requirements.
Just trying to make it easier.
Good try.
Do I hear a motion to approve the new numbers on the COVID-19 funding as recommended by the city manager?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call or roll, please.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McRillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
At this time, we offer the public to come forth and address council. Five minutes per individual speaker. Anybody wishing to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and... Okay, Joe.
James Smith, 17 West Main Street, that is what we're doing. Okay, I've got a couple arguments. Okay, number one is, is not, is not honest, okay? And I'd like to see maybe council look at it. And we had a little discussion about this a little bit earlier, when you have people who buy properties in town, lighted properties, and you went to fix up those properties, and we're getting hit with a $65, $70 water bill. The city box, always a shame, we never use any water. You know, when you're interested in some maintenance, painting, and repair and stuff like that, you know, your saws and stuff set up, and that kind of, you know, it's kind of expensive, it's like you're being penalized for trying to fix the properties up and then put them on the market. So, I was worrying, now, in the old days, when I first got into this, we had, if you were, if a house was under repair and there was nobody living there, you could actually charge a water bill of $6 a month. Now, now, in this day, it might be 10, even 15, that's why. It should be something a little more reasonable since we're really using no water. And the other thing is, then, once you get the house repaired, you put it on the market, give it to a realtor, it sets again for another four, five, or six months until it gets sold, and then you get it back on the, you know, then you get people living there and so forth. And at that point in time, once it's sold, you're going to notice it, because the people that do buy it are going to go down and have the water bill put in their name. And that's why I'd like to see council maybe addresses, okay, something to help us out because I do, I flip a house every year, and I've got, I've got one right now. I bought, I, you know, I bought, actually, I've bought three properties here in just the last couple months. One is, is set idle for six or eight years, you've got nothing on it for that. I want to get the water turned on so I can start working on that, it's going to be a rental unit, but until I can get it repaired and work on it, I don't want to have to pay all that, so I've got, I've got a unit there that's going to cost me $65 a month just to have water on, so I can start working on the unit and get it lived. That has to be done. I've got another house that I'm going to flip. I can't have new water because I can't afford three or four properties to have water bills come in when I'm trying to work on them. come in when I'm trying to work on it and have people who are in there do work on it. So in terms of expense, I just can't bear.
Council's okay with asking the manager to include that in his thoughts and recommendations along with the snowbird idea?
Yes.
I think, I think you brought that up a month or so ago to your manager, so, you know.
Maximum 20 houses a year.
Carter?
Maximum 20 houses a year, okay.
Now, my, my last item before I sit down and I promise I don't bring anything else up is you might want to rethink the way you got this place set up and here's why. I've been to several council meetings before, okay? Never, I had to sit there and try to look around at guys, big guy standing in front of me, filming and I'm trying to see her and I can't see her over here. I'm sure there's several people, there's some people, they couldn't see what they're talking. It's very distracting. I know you'd like to have the public come to more meetings. You want to make it more public friendly.
Okay.
You have to either sell off, sign and film or do something because this is ridiculous, stand right in front of us.
Okay.
He's got a 50-foot cord here, he could be in the back.
Anyone else?
James Elliott, 306 North Franklin Street. Go ahead. I'll let you go.
You already spayed your name.
Okay. Could you add the $6, the monthly fee, if you don't have water on to that, that Jim was asking about? If you, like, if Jim gets that house, as soon as it goes into his name, he has to pay $6 a month with nothing on it. So you're going to make it good for Jim, make it good for everyone. That's my thing.
You mean, don't even charge the sewer readiness?
Well, it's just a water readiness, $6 water readiness fee, even if you don't have water on. It's kind of like taking advantage of people is the way I look at it. I mean, I already paid city tax. Why do I have to pay for water and I'm getting water up there? I have 10 of them, 60 a month. You know, the electric company doesn't charge me until I turn the electric on. The gas company doesn't charge me until I turn the gas on. But the city charges me to leave their meter in the ground.
Thank you.
Oh, I had two other things. Is a special vent permit still at 60 days? Has that been changed?
It hasn't changed.
Yeah, we changed that to what?
Two weeks. 14 days.
14 days?
That require a motion to do that or you just changed?
It was in the change thing.
Okay. And then the dumpsters at Ed Meyer complex, are those under lock and key or video surveillance? They're not under lock and key, I can tell you that. Yeah.
And they're not under video.
So anybody can use them and say that you had it at the sewer plant?
Yeah, if they want to empty their dog poop there.
Yeah, or a deer or whatever it might be.
And that's, that's what's happening.
Yeah. Could you move those dumpsters to the public works department and then the people that are using, like the concession stands down at the Ed Meyer complex, they could just load it in their truck and take it to the public works department because I think public works has video cameras. So at least you're watching.
Are the gates locked at night?
They are.
There's dumpsters outside of the, where are you talking, the Ed Meyer?
Ed Meyer complex.
Yeah. But I mean, who puts a dirt carcass in a dumpster during the day?
Well, I, I actually, I think it was a raccoon, but.
Okay.
It wasn't water.
Yeah. It was, it was a dead animal and it was. It was, it was awful. But I, I can understand the moving of the dumpsters, but then also knowing the multiple practices that are going on down there and, you know, all those kids, right, this time of year, they're consuming three or four Gatorades per practice and they all throw their, which is fine. I mean, they're using.
They throw the garbage can and then the coach or the supervisor, whoever takes it from the garbage cans to the dumpster, they can just take it and put it in their vehicle, their truck and take it to the city public works department. I mean, it's a little extra, but then you don't have, you know, dead raccoons being dumped in it.
Well, one of the other problems we have with our parks is we only have one person designated for park maintenance and he spends his entire summer mowing. You know, if budget time and we, when we're, you know, we're looking at our park system, if we can get additional people in the park system, they can be maintained better, you know. So that's one of the problems we have.
Yeah. And, and the fact that they're not emptied when they're supposed to be emptied, that's, I think that's kind of subject number one to, to address and then see how, how it is when they're emptied on a regular basis.
How many dumpsters do they have at the Ed Meyer complex?
I think there's three or four on a normal basis. But they actually had to bring down another empty one on Saturday morning to be able to host the event and physically drag the other ones out of the way so people could tolerate standing close to the concession area and so on.
And those are the small things that we have to get corrected because I know that softball league wants to use Ed Meyer complex more than what they have been and, you know, again, we use the word friendly.
Yeah.
John? Thanks, Jim.
John Frye, 214 Overlook Drive. Since the $300 for the free, does that mean we're done with it?
What?
You guys decide not to do it or you're going to do it another time? Appreciate you.
I'm not sure what you.
I'm not sure what the question is.
Are you asking if there was a final decision?
Yeah. Are you still doing that, not going to do it?
Well, we.
You think you voted on that last meeting?
Yeah, we voted, we voted to move it to.
Get it worked. That's. Effective 2021, I believe.
Yeah.
That's when it changed.
So you got to look at doing something that you haven't approved, removing that thing.
I think they continue on what they're doing, I think, until 2021.
Right. Right now, it's still, you continue to do what you're.
Right. I understand that, but I thought you were going to redo the ordinance. My question would be, don't redo the ordinance any because you don't need to redo the ordinance for want to change it.
How else would we do it?
He says the amount is set by resolution.
Okay.
And that would save you from advertising, that'll also save us from having to get somebody to change the ordinance in the future.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
And I would like to know, if you're going to put the resolution out there, I'd like to know when it is so I can come and speak against it. I'm not going to keep you here any longer today. I have a lot to say. So please let us know, appreciate if you know whenever it's going to happen. I have some.
You're saying we brought all this stuff to say for nothing?
Well, no, I'll keep it.
Okay.
All right. We'll bring it up again, but I just want to know where we are. Nothing's going to happen next time or.
You go ahead and build.
Okay, thank you very much.
How's the tree removal going?
We're ready to do the next five that you, I've contacted all of the owners and they were all happy. I will tell you a story from the first group. There were two people we did not notify ahead of time and I actually went to talk to the both personally. The one was actually moving in that day when I handed her the thing saying, you're going to get a bill and she was fine with it. So that's.
Thank you, John.
Let me, let me ask you this, one question. Have, have, have your committee members taken a look at trees in Burgess Park?
Yeah, we actually were coming there last Wednesday.
Okay. We were there last week with the new owners of the pit buildings and it appears that there's.
Well, I'm sorry, we were at Shawnee Park.
Okay. Burgess, that there's three or four trees along the fence line that probably need to be addressed.
On the north side of fence?
On the north side of fence. Yeah, maybe take a look at it. I know they have leaves on them, but they're dead.
People were crawling.
Between the fence and wall.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll look at that and we have to also look at Fleming Park. They're really.
Now, if you take down a city tree, we only get charged 300?
Public, if they're small enough, public works states got trees too.
They're not small enough.
We can't do that.
All right, thanks, John. Anybody else? Leo?
I just want to make a comment about the trash. If you need any more evidence to hold your trash holler accountable, I could probably send you some photos of overflowing garbage cans in the downtown, especially on Monday nights when you have a concert and you have a park full of people. And people will throw away trash accordingly if there's space. So this is, oh, this has been a pet peeve of mine for a while. The trash holler is, I think, responsible to pick up the cans that are on the street and you walk downtown, you'll see overflowing and you know it hasn't been touched in weeks. So add that to your list of things they're not building.
There you go, Neil.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Comments by mayor and council? Sarah?
I don't have any additional comments.
Jay?
That's enough.
Bill?
I got a couple. Pertaining to the Diamond Street project in that area down there, please be, be aware that we will, we have a plan, believe me.
I always.
It's not out of.
Don't pull this guy.
Anyhow, we will be coming up with the, with a full presentation of what's going to happen down there and what we look forward to, to happening. Different buildings down there and I think it's going to benefit the city. We're not, we're not out to make it modern, try to keep it the way it's always been. Another thing, I'd like to know, let everybody know that the pit properties down there, we've talked to Mr. Ritchie and we talked to the YMCA, the YMCA about the pool aspect of everything. I think we're going to go ahead and talk to Mr. Ritchie about the pool. We will be putting a pool in, ladies and gentlemen. It might not be this winter, but as soon as we can find the people to, the right people to do the pool, we will be putting a pool in. It'll be a, what, six to eight, six to eight lanes, Danny?
Little size.
And that's another thing we got to look forward in this town. Also, I'd like to mention our school district, well, I'm mayor. My prayers are out to those people and they got a lot of stuff to go, what's going on right now. Now, the kids go back to school when and first. I'm, I'm only a grandparent. I'm glad I don't have a kid in school. Well, I'll tell you what, it's going to be hectic and I feel sorry for the students. I feel sorry for the, the teachers, what they're, what they're going to go, have to go through. It's just, it's a bad time altogether. They talk about the sports, the band, the whole nine yards. It's just, it's something we're going to have to deal with and I, I really congratulate the district, the school district of how they're handling it and time will tell and I think we'll get through this. Thank you.
Mine's kind of a side note that wasn't even talked about tonight, but Denny and I were taking a ride through Burgess Park yesterday and drove around by where the splash pad is and the little building there that has locker rooms and stuff. I just wanted to give a shout out to the young gentleman that we rent the apartment to there, Tech Talk. He takes care of the community center there, but he also takes care of the pool, the splash pad areas. He was hosing it down and he really, he's really doing a nice job. That's all I have.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's a lot different setting up here and trying to make the right decision while we entertain comments by the public. Believe me, we, we're not doing this on whim. Things have been thought out. Your, your input is very important to us and although some of you didn't get the vote that you were expecting tonight or wanting tonight, hopefully the votes we made aren't going to affect us in a negative way. Time will tell and, you know, if we have to revisit, we will revisit. We appreciate everybody coming and talking to us. Next time you come, you'll be able to see Sarah. Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I second.
Call or roll.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Mr. Witowski?
Yes.